Yeah, all right. I have seven o'clock on the wall, so I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular city council meeting of Monday, October ninth, 2023. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barbara, you call the roll, please.
Lanyon.
Here.
Pratt.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Dan Olsberg.
Here.
Ryanes.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
We did receive a call from Councilman Lanyon that he is not able to be present this evening, so I am looking for a motion to excuse his absence.
I'd like a motion to excuse.
All right, both of you, thank you. Do I support?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda unless there are changes to be made.
I approve that the agenda is submitted.
Thank you so, thank you so much. Do I support?
Sure.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries for that as well. Now we have an opportunity for our audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anybody that would like to come forward? If so, please come forward, state your name and address. Come forward, Kent.
I'm Kent Hall, 509 Red Cedar Boulevard. Just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on what's going on with our trail out here. And there's been a couple comments to me and a couple others about if we go after a federal memorial, federally recognized, that does not make that a federal park. It is gonna be, it is and always should be, a city park. So that's not gonna have anything to do with it. What it will do is allow us to put a memorial there and possibly get big funding for some of the big ideas we have. The city, we've already pretty much agreed upon a trail.
Mm-hmm.
And there's gonna be other things that we hope to bring in, and that'll either come from, if he does a good job and keeps a little money for me, or, again, with the federal designation of a federal monument there, there might open up some other avenues.
Okay.
So it's all good news, and that's it.
Great. Well, I know this is a passionate project for you, and you've been working on it for a very long time. You know, the concept is amazing. I think that our community will love it once it comes to completion, but I appreciate the fact that you were able to come in this evening and give us an update on it.
Okay.
Thank you, Kent. Would anybody else like to come forward at this time for public comment? All right, moving along, we have our council meeting minutes of September 25th, 2023. I'm looking for approval unless there are changes that need to be noted.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as soon as possible.
Thank you so much. Do I support? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. This evening for accounts payable, I'm going to turn to Terry Hanson, and I know that you didn't have an opportunity to review those. Brandon usually is the one that takes care of that for us, but would you be able to make a motion for that?
I can make that motion.
Great, thanks so much.
I trust Brandon to review them. So, make a motion to approve checks 77-017 through 77-043 and ACH 551 through 571 for a grand total of $3,671,955.15.
Great, thank you so much, Terry. I appreciate you stepping in for that. Just for our viewing community, the reason why that is such a high dollar amount is we do have fall taxes that were due to several entities, so those were paid out. Did we receive any questions regarding the accounts payable? All right, great. So thank you so much. So we have that motion. Do I have support for that?
Second.
All right, thank you so much. Barbara, will you call the roll for accounts payable this evening, please?
Dan Olsberg.
Yeah.
Ryanes.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yeah.
Jenkins.
Matthew.
Great, thank you so much. And now it's time for our audit presentation with Rosalind Prestage and company, so I'm gonna call forward. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me come again and presenting you the information on the 2023 audit. I brought with me tonight, handed out a packet for presentation. Those pages come directly out of the full audit report. There's a PDF that is available to you of the full audit report if you're interested in that. But I bring this packet with me to help us to focus on some key issues that are in the report. If you have any questions as we go through it, please let me know.
Great, thank you.
The first page we turn in is the independent auditor's report. Here is where we actually give an opinion on the financial statements as a result of the audit. So I've highlighted the basic parts of the report or of the letter here. The first paragraph is the opinion. Here's where we provide an opinion based on our audit, and I put a box around the key wording there. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly. That's called an unqualified opinion, highest level of assurance that we can give. So that's the type of wording that you want to have in your letter. Below that, it gives a paragraph discussing what the basis of our opinion was, and then the letter also discusses management's responsibility for the statements, also the auditor's responsibility for those statements. On the next page, it talks about various supplementary information that's included within the financial statements. And at the bottom of that second page, it talks about other reporting required by government auditing standards. That's another letter that we do include with the financial statements of the city. That's included in this packet as well. We'll cover that at the end. So if you go in a few more pages, you'll see the balance sheet for governmental funds. When I present this information, I try to present it in a way that makes sense to the boards. So I do this a little out of order in relation to how it's presented in the financial statements. Here, I'm presenting to you first the governmental funds, which is typically how boards will receive the information on a monthly basis. You tend to get information on the individual funds. Here we show the general fund, major street fund, and the local street fund. Those are the governmental funds of the city. And you can see I've put a note up on the top corner there. These funds are presented on a modified accrual basis. That's a short-term view. We only look out 60 days after year-end. So this information does not include long-term information such as capital assets and long-term debt that are related to these funds. This page is the balance sheet. On this page, we will list first the assets, which are items that are owned by the city. After that are liabilities or items that are owed to others as of year-end. And then the difference between those two flows down into fund balance, which you see at the bottom. So I've highlighted the general fund information. Total assets as of year-end were 3.5 million. Total liabilities were 661,000, which brought us down to a total fund balance as of year-end of 2.8 million. And you'll see fund balance is broken out into several categories. The first is non-spendable. The second is restricted by third parties. And that third column, or that third item, is unassigned. That's what's left over to help pay for operations in the next year. So we provide an analysis on the bottom of this page of that unassigned number. We compare that to annual expenditures for the year to see how robust the fund balance is as of year-end. And when we do that comparison here, total expenditures in the general fund for the year were 2,085,000. When we compare that to the unassigned fund balance in the general fund, that's over 100%. So it's a very robust fund balance. The next page is the same information. It's the income statement, if you will. It's called a statement of revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance for those governmental funds. Again, we've got the general fund, major street fund, local street fund. And again, up in the corner, I've identified that this is on a modified accrual basis. We only look out 60 days after year-end. On this page, we show the revenues first. That's money coming in to fund operations. Below that, we show expenditures or money that went out for goods, services, desk service, things like that. The next category under that are other financing sources. Those are transfers of funds between the different funds. Then we come down to the net change and fund balance, which is the third line from the bottom. For the general fund, that activity for the year netted an increase in the fund balance of 580,000 for the general fund. The next page is where we take that information on the government, governmental funds, and we add to that the long-term information. We roll it up to page one. And you can see up in the corner there, I've identified that these two pages, pages one and two, are on a full accrual basis. So the governmental column, the governmental activities column, takes the information in the general fund, major street fund, local street fund, as well as the internal service fund. And it pushes all those together and then modifies that information for long-term activity, capital assets, any related debt. And this being the statement of net position, or the balance sheet, of course, will list the assets first, deferred outflows of resources that relates to pension and other post-employment benefits, liabilities, which will include the long-term liabilities there, deferred inflows of resources, again, which relate to pension and other post-employment benefits. And the difference between all those categories brings us down to the net position. For governmental activities, net position at the end of the year was 6,958. The next column is the business-type activities. These are funds that already run on a full accrual basis, meaning it's long-term, goes out past the 60 days. The business-type activities accounts for the water and sewer funds. Okay? And at the end of the year, the business-type activities came to a total net position of just over $10 million. The next page is the statement of activities, an income statement, if you will, on the full accrual basis. This is presented a little bit differently, but if you go to the bottom of this page, three lines up, you'll see the change in net position on a full accrual basis. For the governmental activities, on a full accrual basis, the change in net position was a positive 311,000. Again, that's added to the bottom line, if you will. For the business-type activities, however, there was a reduction of 184,000. Next page is a section out of the notes to the financial statements. For the bottom, I like to show sometimes the activity and long-term debt. For these tables, we are required to show the beginning balance first, which is last year's ending balance. Then we show any additions to the long-term activity, which could be new debt or additions to compensated absences, and then deletions after that to give us an ending balance. I put a box around the additions and deletions. You'll see the only additions here are in relation to compensated absences. Those are accrued leave that are earned throughout the year. But the deletions, you'll see that debt is continuing to be paid off as expected. There looks to be one more year in the component unit, general obligation bond, and that'll be paid off. The next page, we like to make sure that our boards are aware of upcoming accounting pronouncements that may have an impact. The first one here is GASB statement number 100, accounting for changes and error corrections. This is designed to enhance accounting and financial reporting requirements for accounting changes and error corrections. And then the second one is GASB statement number 101, which will update the recognition and measurement guidance for how we compute compensated absences. Okay? The board or the municipalities do already account for compensated absences. This will have a little bit of an impact on how that is calculated going forward. The next page I wanted to put in the packet this year was to provide some insight on some other information I may have not touched on in the past. With the implementation of GASB 68 and GASB 75, it required local units of government to include additional statements in the back of their report that talk about pension and OPAP or other post-employment benefit plans that are offered to their employees. Those are the defined benefit plans. And with that implementation, it required there to be a building report. It's gonna build until there are 10 years' worth of information here, and we're still building those as we, as we go. This is page 42 out of the full audit report. It's the second page of the information for the pension plan. You see at the top, I've highlighted there, the plan year-end for your pension plan is actually December 31st. So as of December 31st, 2022, which is the far-right column there, down a little bit, you'll see I've highlighted that the total pension liability ending as of December 31st for the city of Williamson is 5.3 million. That's an actuarially determined pension liability. And then we take the information for the liability, and we net against that liability the assets that are being paid out or set aside to meet that obligation going forward. That's the planned fiduciary net position. That's in the section below that. And then I've highlighted the net pension liability. So we take that actuarially determined pension liability, and we net that with the assets that are there to pay it. And you come down to a net pension liability as of December 31st, 2022 of 1.8 million. And you'll see that number also on page one of the financial statements. That is the pension liability as of year-end, net pension liability. And then the next page is that same information for what are called the other post-employment benefit plan, benefits. Those are the health insurance items that are offered to select employees here at the city. You'll see at the top, we've got the OPAP liability. That was as of 6/30 or June 30. This plan has a year-end of 6/30. That OPAP liability was determined to be 335,000. This plan is a little bit different than the pension plan because there are not assets that are being set aside. This has been determined to be a pay-as-you-go plan. So you can see under the fiduciary net position that that is zero. Again, no assets are being set aside right now. That is a pay-as-you-go plan, so the overall net OPAP liability is still the 335. And again, that can be traced up to page one as well. The next page is the independent auditor's report on internal control and on compliance. This is the government auditing standards letter that was referenced in the opinion I've highlighted some of the key terminology here. During our audit, we did not identify deficiencies in internal control that we considered to be material weaknesses. And then below that, the results of our tests disclosed no instances of non-compliance that were required to communicate. So if we had issues that we noted during the audit that we were required to communicate to the board, this is where you would find those. I'm happy to report that there were none. And then the letter after that you'll see is communication with those charged with governance at the conclusion of the audit. For our audit, we are required to communicate with the board at the beginning of the audit, and then again at the conclusion of the audit. And that is the letter at the conclusion of the audit.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. If there are any questions, please feel free to call our office.
I will, absolutely. Council members, if you do have questions regarding this, if you would direct them to the city manager, he will be able to get those answers. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, moving along on our agenda, we're coming up to our action items. We have one this evening. This is the resolution for the social district. I'm gonna turn this over to our city manager, John Haniford.
Thank you. This is, it'll go pretty smoothly. The resolution's actually very simple. What you'll be recommending in each case is to, reading for the resolution, there'd be a motion, be supported, that the application from, and I have the various licensees listed here, that their application is recommended or not for approval by this board. So the four entities are Tavern 109, Nikos, Zinda, Williamson Pub. Tavern 109, if you scroll to that page, they did include their information that their licensee name is Tavern 109 LLC. So you can start with that one. I know Nikos is listed first. So the first resolution presented would be for a social district permit that is recommended for Tavern 109 LLC. And then vote on that, and then we'll go through each one. And then I, like I said, I'll read out the doing business as the LLCs for the other three.
Great, all right. Is there anybody that would like to make that first motion?
Make a motion that we grant a license?
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval of a license for a social district permit for Tavern 109 LLC.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
No.
Thank you. Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
No.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Dan Olsberg.
Yes.
Ryanes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's the first. Next on the list?
Next up would be Gavrilides. Neil, that first take. Property management, doing business as Nikos.
All right. Terry, you did such a good job with that first one.
Make a motion to recommend approval of a social district permit for?
Gavrilides.
Gavrilides, property management.
Doing business as Nikos.
Thank you so much, do I have support?
Second.
Thank you. Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
No.
Jenkins. I'm sorry?
Yes.
Dan Olsberg.
Yes.
Ryanes.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
All right, our next.
That would be for 150 East Real Estate Investment LLC, doing business as Zindas.
Recommend approval of a social district permit application for?
150 East Real Estate Investment LLC, doing business as Zindas.
Doing business as Zindas, yes.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you. All right, do I have support? Thank you. Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Pratt.
No.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Dan Olsberg.
Yes.
Ryanes.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
All right, and our last.
Our last is Ronald and Joanne Hamlin, doing business as Williamson Pub.
Recommend approval of the social district permit application for?
Ronald and Joanne Hamlin?
Doing business as the Williamson Pub.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Part.
Thank you both. Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
No.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Dan Olsberg.
Yes.
Ryanes.
Yes.
All right. That concludes our action items, and John, my assumption will be that you will contact the four entities, let them know that the resolution passed?
Yeah, so what happens now is our resolution that was established, the rules of the district and the boundaries, that's submitted to the LARA, which is the Liquor Control Commission, and each of the individual members has to apply on their own. It's a relatively, but my understanding, a relatively quicker turnaround than a traditional license, but there's like a fax form and things like that. So all these entities we've been in contact with, and, you know, hopefully they get those submitted, and away we go.
All right, wonderful. Thank you so much. Yes, Steve, and then I'll call in Terry.
Last of my thought, someone indicated that the Williamson Theater had an interest in participating.
Go ahead, John.
They're not a liquor establishment, so they would have to get their own liquor license before they could participate, because one of the things this precludes you from, you can purchase a cocktail at one of these establishments and move about in the comments area, but you can't enter into another establishment. You can't do that.
I think they have an idea of potentially doing a one-off or an event in the future, which they would be able to do. They'd be able to apply to the Liquor Commission for a special license if they were to want to host wine and beer.
Well, so you can't go in the theater with, even though it's in the district.
Correct. Correct. Legal, I believe. Yes. Non-profits have, I believe it's one a month. If you're a 501(c)(3), you can apply for a special use license for, I think it's 12. It's not necessarily limited to one, but I think it's a 12 or 12.
Right.
It's a fairly common thing.
All right, yeah.
So this would be similar to like the Eagles in a club that has members that are allowed to go down there, and the members can go in and drink and whatnot. But a lot of times, they'll have special events and things, and then they come down and frequently go through the police department for a special, special use permit for when they want to be open to the general public, and they have to apply for a special liquor permit. So the theater will probably be doing something.
Yes.
And the liquor licensing thing, just because I'm new to stuff, is that county-level, state-level, or whatever?
State.
State-level, okay. And you're saying that the turnaround in this shouldn't be any big deal? It's kind of routine, sort of?
Never want to anticipate the state's turnaround type of things, but my experience historically has been within the realm of what us normal people would call reasonable.
We'll keep our fingers crossed for.
Brings the price close.
Right? All right. Well, thank you very much, Council, for that. That concludes our action items, so I will move along to our discussion items. And do we have an update on our road diet?
Sure, we do.
Thanks, Scott.
We have, MDOT has been going through the process, so they've been going back and forth as far as whether it's gonna be project handled through the city directly, or is it gonna be handled through MDOT. That's hopefully coming to an end here soon. But they did contact me about the final estimate for the project and also the trying to get the job number scheduled, which, once we have the job number scheduled, everything starts to roll.
Wonderful. All right.
Little steps in the progress. It's taking a little bit of time, but.
All right. Well, we know that we kind of have to rely on MDOT to give us that information, so I'm sure they'll have another update for us, you know, within the next couple weeks. Yes, Terry?
We're still on target for next summer, though, right?
That's what we've indicated to them, even if, and we've told them, if necessary, the city's willing to advance construct, which means the city fronts the money, and then the reimbursement of the grant money comes in the following fiscal year. And the state's fiscal year is different than ours.
Right.
It begins October 1st, and ours begins July 1st.
We will, we will watch for future updates then, and hopefully that will move along smoothly. We'll just move right into construction project update. How's North Buttonam going?
North Buttonam's going pretty well. Things are progressing according to all anticipated schedules. There's a minor hiccup that happened today that we found that they have to relay some pipe, but they should be able to handle that in a short time frame. The other big news that I want to share with you is that on Friday, the rebid of the road work happened, and the bids came in extremely well. The engineer's estimate for that part of the project was 1,096,000 and some change, and we had seven bidders.
Wow, fantastic.
And of those seven bidders, four of them have worked on projects here in the city of Williamson before.
Excellent.
Iron Horse did provide a bid, Hoffman provided a bid, and CND Hughes provided a bid, as well as Chemega and Road Roots? I'm saying that name. And they've all worked on previous road projects for us in town. The low was KNR.
Wow.
So they came in at 1,107 and some change.
All right.
So when you take that and you take how we repackaged and rebid the North Buttonam part, the infrastructure part, instead of paying 3.5 million dollars, which was the bid back in April, we end up being less than that by 912,000.
That's fantastic.
Can you say that again slowly, five times?
There's a, there's a ton of numbers written on my page here.
Not the whole thing, just the part of the numbers.
Yeah, instead of 3.5.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Yeah.
2.6, that's cool.
2.6.
912 what, Scott?
Okay, you want to know exactly. I was going to write 912,417 and 73 cents was the difference.
So this bidding thing with the, with the MDOT thing in the side, was that, we had, there was some sort of a, of a clause that was in there that made everybody not want to bid it and forced it up to 3.5. So that really was a poison pill. When we removed the poison pill, we get a million dollars back.
Well, I, I don't know if it was a poison pill. It, it had to do with the time period in which it was going out. There was a huge glut of, of, um, highway work in the market at the time. And there was some very large infrastructure projects going on in the spring. Everything was hitting the market at the same time. And there were not enough contractors to go around and do a lot of the work. We got one bid for the job and was, had some very high prices. And we weren't the only ones. There were many, um, state and local agencies that were in those few months there of the bids going out. Um, the, this bid cycle and the one just previous to this, um, numbers were beginning to look much more predictable. The fact that we had seven bidders and that the, you know, the low bid was 1.107, the high bid was 1.308. I mean, it was a very tight spread.
Wow.
And, um, you know, Iron Horse was right in the middle. They were 1.2. So, you know, it's, it's a very tight spread. It's very good numbers. It was very encouraging to see the fact that we've come back to a little bit more of a predictable marketplace at this point in time. So we're hoping that we've kind of ridden out those waves and ripples a little bit.
And you said that KNR was the lowest.
Mm-hmm.
And what work have they done for us in the city that you could?
They did the, uh, East Riverside Street back in 2006.
Well, that's fantastic. Thank you so much. Um, I know that we'll have a lot more updates. What, um, are we still on target for our anticipated conclusion of the project? I know we've had some rain over, you know, and I know that we're moving into colder weather. So what's your, what's your prediction as far as?
As of today, the, uh, the water main that they put in the first block, uh, the test came back great. So they started tying over water services beginning today. Hopefully by the end of the week, the, all the water main work will be done. Um, majority of the storm sewer work will be done in that first block. And they already have all of the sewer services tied over to the new, uh, pipes as well in that first block. So, um, good things coming next week, hopefully, and then moving on to the block to the north after next week.
Great.
Is what we anticipate.
Fantastic. Yes.
By blocks, the engineers talking about from East Riverside to Church.
Correct.
Hopefully we'll be out of that and then moving on from Church to Bismarck and then we'll be complete.
Right.
Correct.
So bridge to Riverside is already done?
Uh, the bridge to Riverside was very minimal in the work that was done and that pavement was placed here a few weeks ago. So that intersection has been kind of pseudo-open to traffic. It still is a construction zone, but people have been able to get around the corner.
What's your general feel for the amount of traffic that's been going through? I mean, I think that the community has reacted and responded very well to what we thought was going to be a major headache with as much construction that was going on over there. So, you know, what, how do you feel about the, the traffic flow that's been going through?
Uh, the vast majority of people have been very gracious and have appreciated the fact that all the efforts the city and the contractor have made to try and keep as much movement through that area as possible. Um, you know, and our, our contractor has, has gone well above the call of duty to help everything out. So.
They have.
And, you know, we, we appreciate that.
Is it Iron Horse that's doing it?
Yes.
So does this performance by Iron Horse in this project, even though they're a little higher, does that mean that they might be considered, even though it's a little higher?
Can't do that through the state.
Can't do that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, and they know the process too. John?
But you, that's an excellent question. You might have the same one, but then I kind of know the answer. When you're using state funding, there has to be a compelling reason. We would have to have had some sort of like past litigation history with like the low bidder.
Sure.
Something like that. Or, or, you know, somehow their bonds, um, they lost their bonding or things like that.
Right.
The good news is all these companies are pre-qualified and capable of being bonded and they can, they'll do a good job for us.
Excellent. Well, um, you know, we'll look forward to additional updates as we get closer to the end of that project. And, um, you know, we appreciate, um, just the fantastic job that they're doing. I mean, I know Councilman Langen speaks so highly of them because he is right there in the thick of things. And I hope that it's the same sentiment from, um, the other residents that are over there. But I mean, I know just, social media can be great and it can be not great. And I, from the jump off of this project until now, I've seen nothing negative at all. And so that speaks very highly of Iron Horse that's out there, our city staff that's there monitoring. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, uh, moving down, we have correspondent Steve, and that is going to be our joint meeting agenda. I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, John Hammond, just so he can, um, go over that for our council and our community.
Sure, thank you. Annually, we meet with Williamson Township in a joint, um, it's really more of a discussion session, I guess, than a work session. Um, and this time we're meeting out at the Township Hall on October 18th, which is Wednesday. It's 4990s of the road. Um, and they, there's really a couple of different entities that give an update. There's a senior center, the schools, the library, NISA, and then the township and the city. And, and our discussion topics are joint visioning, and that's really more from a planning perspective for the region, housing, um, discussion about the river grants, and then youth sports information. So those are the topics. Um, I don't think the agenda will change much. Like I said, it is a work session. Certainly in public, are welcome to attend. There's public comment at the beginning. So, um, look forward to a, a nice discussion with our, our neighbors and partners and, um, hopefully, uh, hopefully we can all make it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great opportunity to share information between the two entities, um, the city and the township, because we are all part of, um, 488, 48895. And so, you know, if, if council members, if you can be present, um, it's always an opportunity to meet, uh, the trustees for the township. Um, and if not, we will definitely report back, um, as to, you know, the topics of discussion and, and those updates. And, um, but it is, it's nice to get together with our, um, neighboring township and just kind of talk about what's going on, um, share news and information and, um, and hear updates from those entities that will be there. All right, moving along, we've got our department head reports. So I'll jump right back over there again to your city manager, John Hammond.
Just want to thank everyone for participating in our, our joint work session with the, the planning commission. I thought that went really well. Um, a lot of, a lot of work left to do on the master plan, the zoning ordinance, but it was really a, I think, a great high-level discussion on how we want the, the future of, of our community to look. And, um, so, so that was pretty exciting. Um, next week's another busy week. We do have a parks, uh, meeting this Wednesday, um, kind of kick off the, the meetings for, for the next, uh, week or so. We will have a Tifa EDC meeting on Monday. Um, we have a DDA meeting on Tuesday, and then we do have a joint meeting on Wednesday. My wife will be thrilled. I'll be out of the house. See you guys next, next week. Mr. Smith is here, our resident tree expert, and he was, did a whole heck of a lot of work on a, a tree grant concept for, uh, tree nursery and, uh, deadline for that is this week. So I had a few items that I'm going to inter, interact with him on tomorrow, hopefully, um, and we'll get that submitted. It's really a, a nice concept. We've talked about that before.
Yeah.
So it's really, uh, really a good, uh, good thing for direction for us that as far as trees in town. And that is all I have.
Great. Thank you so much. Any questions for John before I move along? All right. Well, we have our brand new police chief here, Chief Weiss. And so, uh, what department report do you have for us?
Well, holy fright. It's been a busy week. Um, but it's been a seamless transition. We're, uh, Chief Young, uh, answering a lot of questions and, uh, Vani answering even more. So it's, it's been a good transition. We were able to, um, we have a full-time officer starting in November, Officer Tryon Colkins, uh, retired from the sheriff's office, uh, after 25 years. So he has a lot of experience. Then a part-time officer, Michael Graham, that will be starting next week. Again, retired from the sheriff's office with a lot of good experience.
Excellent.
So we're moving right along.
So how has your first week been? Out on the road, at the desk, everything?
Mostly at the desk, on the phone, talking to Vani and Bob.
Sure.
But it's, uh, it's been a good week.
Great. Excellent. Well, good. We're glad to have you there in uniform, um, not on this side of the desk, but over there on that side of the desk. And, uh, um, you know, I'm waiting for that side-by-side shot of your first, uh, interaction with the police department back, um.
1988.
1988.
Yep.
And, uh, now you're back. So we appreciate it and, and look forward to, uh, you know, you being here at the table with us.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So in addition to talking to Bob and Vani, you managed to recruit two more people? I'm, I'm sort of following this.
Well, the, the recruitment took place before I actually started, but.
But it hasn't kind of come to fruition here, so you?
It has. So they.
That's like one and a half guys, right?
Yes, correct. Um, so with the two, uh, people that are being sponsored by us in the academy, hopefully by spring, we'll, we'll be up to full strength.
Full strength, wow.
Yeah. That, that's a very quick turnaround.
Yeah, that's, that's really wild.
Yeah. Well, good. We look forward to more updates and especially to hear about students in the academy for sure. All right, Tom, you're here and we did have our auditor report and everything, but what else would you like to share with us?
I actually just would like to, uh, make a few comments following the auditor report. Um, I guess, just to, you know, it's not that often we talk about numbers. It's never exciting, but, um, sometimes it's a necessity, I guess, because you guys definitely need to know where the city stands. And I just want to let you know, you know, we do feel very comfortable with the general fund and our governmental funds. We're, we're doing well. Things are looking good. We're paying debts down. In fact, we've actually paid off two larger loans this year. But I remember one for sure I know we paid. Seems like there's another one that is either paid off or almost paid off this, this year. So we're doing well on, on that. Um, I will mention, um, uh, the, when she talked about the enterprise funds, the sewer water funds, you know, she did mention the negative, um, net position of 184,000. Uh, that wasn't a surprise to us, as you're all aware. You know, we, we've had that tough conversation of raising rates because we knew, you know, that, uh, it costs a lot of money to keep the infrastructure going. So we anticipated that. We saw that coming. That's why we approached you guys for raising the rates. And, and we know that with those rate increases coming, we can hopefully turn that around. Um, a point I will make, you know, that could have been a lot worse. Uh, one thing that we've got going for us right now this year is interest rates. Um, it's amazing to, to see, I've even had a few people ask me, is that right? Even the auditor at one point asked, is that number right? Because, uh, just the enterprise funds alone, we made about 145,000 more in just interest earnings this year than a year ago. And when you're looking back, when banks were paying 0.4%, 0.5% interest, you know, and now it's 4.5%, that, that's a huge number. That adds up a lot. So, so that's a good thing. We're seeing that on all the funds. A lot more interest income, so it's helping a lot. But again, it was a good audit. Um, things are looking really well here in the city financially. You know, I'm real comfortable with the way things are going. I hope the city management as well. I think, I think things are looking bright. So, and again, I always encourage you guys, if you have any questions with anything on financials, I'm definitely, you know, willing to sit down with them, go through them, or talk to them, so.
Great. John, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just, just to show like the, I guess, the, the impact of, you know, the interest rates and, and, you know, our, our investment income in certain funds. Um, if you notice, in, in, in our auditor mentioned that for the retirement funds that it's based on a calendar year. And the calendar year ending 2022 was a horrible year for, for interest income. And that was really the downturn in that fund. And so we expect in 2023, when you see that number next year, it will be vastly improved. Um, I don't know that we'll see, you know, 4% to 5%, but like, as the treasurer said, the normal government interest is usually around 0.4% or 0.5%. Because we're restricted, because the idea is to restrict it so that you don't lose all of your funds in, you know, in, in bad investments. So, you know, I appreciate all the work that, that Tom and, and Andu and the staff. And, um, just look forward to us, uh, coming, uh, this winter shortly after the holidays to, to dive into, you know, the future and have our strategic planning and talk about, you know, the use of the fund balance and talk about paying some of that debt, talk about getting on a schedule for OPEB. We don't have a huge OPEB liability, but we're in a position where we can start maybe pre-funding some of that. So just a little precursor for next, for our next strategic planning, um, from, as a council.
Scott, you have a question?
Yeah, Gatsby 100 mentioned a change in accounting principles. Um, could you elaborate on that a little bit? That sounds like change in accounting principles, sounds like a big deal. Uh, what is that? What's the implication?
I don't think that will affect us a lot. I think that one is more for a change if you need to go back and, um, make corrections from prior accounting periods, the way I understand it. Um, but just to give you guys an idea, Gatsby is Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and they have new, um, they unveil new changes every year. It's not uncommon. And it seems like it's kind of increased a lot in the last several years. Um, when I started, I think we're, of course, I've been here a while, not here here, but as a treasurer, a while. But they were like a Gatsby 40 or 30, some are 40, and now we're already up to 101, I think they're talking. And they're already looking in the future for, you know, because they're always looking a few years ahead. And they, they don't, they, they approve them a few years ahead and then announce to us, you know, that when they're going to impact us and stuff. So, so every year we're going to get new ones. Um, some of them impact us a lot, some don't. The biggest ones are the pension ones. The pension ones really have added a lot of extra work, a lot of extra stuff to the audit, a lot of extra time, actuarial expenses, you know, a lot of extra stuff to municipalities. Um, so I don't think 100 or 101 will affect us a lot, even though 101 pertains to pensions. Like Christina said earlier, we're already doing a lot with pensions from the earlier Gaspys. I think it's just going to maybe, um, take those and modify a little bit the language that was, um, pat, or approved from the earlier Gaspys. And going forward, hopefully, um, make it, make a little more sense, I guess, going forward, a little more consistency in how things are reported going forward. Um, but yeah, I don't think 100 is going to be too terrible for us. I think it's more if you have errors or something, I have to go back and change how you report.
Well, we appreciate that, Tom. Thank you so much. And great questions, Scott. I appreciate that. Um, moving along, we've got our committee, subcommittee reports. So is there anybody that would like to share anything from any of our, um, city boards that you've attended recently? Yes, Tara?
Parks. Not that I've attended, but we're going to have a big one on Wednesday. It's all about Memorial Park especially and, uh, and funding, because it's all about the funding.
All right.
It's coming up.
Great. Thank you so much. Look forward to, um, hearing feedback from that. Anyone else? Um, I'll just share, um, our DDA. Um, if you are downtown and you, uh, take a walk through, we have got some amazing Halloween, uh, fall decorations on our light posts. I want to thank Hamlin Farms, um, for coming in and doing that decorating. It's not something we've had before, um, but we felt that we needed to be a little bit more festive this year. Um, so continue to watch what happens downtown. Um, the DDA has some, some good ideas, um, that we're working on and, and, uh, we will bring them to the community as soon as we can.
Who funded the stuff here?
So it's, uh, the DDA funds that, the DDA, um, our, our budget.
It's amazingly affordable.
It's, it's.
It really is.
And just, um.
More than what you'd have priced.
Backstory to that, um, Hamlin Farms is out off of Holt Road. I happened to be out there with neighbors because they had, um, an event. I met John Hamlin. He mentioned that he decorated in the city of Holland. And I said, just send me some pictures. I wanted to show them to my city manager and, and our DDA board. He did, and it was, it was a no-brainer.
So this is Holt Road to the east of Meridian there?
Yeah, uh, to the west of Meridian.
West of Mer, west of Mer, yeah.
Or, no, I'm sorry. East Meridian, west of Zimmer. Yes. Yep. Uh, there, Holt Road's full of, you know, little tiny, uh, farms and, and roadside stands and markets. It's great.
That's why they sell the pumpkins and that sort of thing.
Yeah, so I bought pumpkins here last year.
Yep, so.
Yeah, that's a farm.
Yeah, yep. So it was a no-brainer again. And, um, they're still setting up some of the decorations, but that's all in, um, ramp up for October 28th, which I'll just put in a real quick plug, which is, um, what are we calling it? Which is in?
Warlocks.
Which is in warlocks. Uh, October 28th, Saturday, there'll be a lot of events downtown. Um, it will be downtown trick-or-treating from 2:00 to 4:00. Uh, Chamber of Commerce has events, uh, scattered throughout the entire day. Um, we have a decorate light pole contest, uh, similar to what we did earlier this year with the decades party at the Four Corners. Um, so it's going to be an exciting day downtown. We'll all keep our fingers crossed for good weather as we, uh, roll through the month of October. Um, but any other comments regarding committees or boards? All right. We have another opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? All right. Uh, moving right along to council member comments. I will start with Dan Ryanes this evening.
Couple of things. First, uh, it's amazing to hear that we have, uh, things are going really well with Chief Weiss starting out. Um, some new officers coming in. Very happy to hear that. And I, I want to thank, uh, once again, retiring Chief Young for, for coming in, stepping up and helping us out when he, when we needed him and, uh, standing in the gap there for a few months for us. That was very helpful. Um, I also wanted to say, I, uh, the, the vote today for the resolutions to allow the, the different bars and restaurants to, to endorse that. I obviously, two weeks ago, did not approve of the policy that, uh, that we should have this. I still don't, but that's something we've adopted as a city and that, uh, decided on. So. So all of these bars and restaurants have been upstanding in town. We haven't had any problems with them in the past. And I have no problem with them being able to use a, use a policy that we adopted as a city. So that's why I changed my vote to that.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Dan. Scott?
Yeah, I'm very excited to hear about the tree thing. Trees, I'm weak with trees as well. I can't tell how enthused I am about that. And I'm also enthused about the police chief transition. That's cool. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Steve?
Just a, another thank you to the city manager and the engineer. Shouldn't go unnoticed, but a comment about saving taxpayers or saving Williamson $900,000 because of their willingness to dig in and look at alternatives to what could have happened or what could have been. And I just think that it makes me feel good as a council member, knowing that we are in good hands with those that on a day-to-day or night-to-night and day-to-day basis are looking out for our interests. And I appreciate that and applaud them for our, for their efforts.
Thank you. Terry?
I'm envious of Councilman Ryanes. I wish I could say that I voted against the resolution before I voted for the resolution. Because that would sound so cool.
So Dan provided you a teachable moment, is what you're saying.
Good.
Well, that's a little...
I know, right? Tom?
I think it's pretty much all been said. I'll just kind of ditto everybody else.
All right.
And go from there.
All right. I do want to sort of thank you out to Chief Young again. You didn't have to step forward to, to fill that interim position for us, but you did, and we appreciate that. I know that you love this community, or else you wouldn't have come back and filled that gap for us. So I ditto Councilman Ryanes on that. I want to thank Chief Weiss for being so proactive before you actually put on your Williamson uniform with trying to staff up. And I know that you'll continue to work towards that. And even though you do have two cadets that are going to go through the academy, that doesn't mean that you're going to stop there. You also have, you know, a reserve program underneath you that you'll need to get familiar with. And, and I hope that that flourishes as well, because we know the reserves are so important for us when we have special events here in the community. I look forward to all of your future reports. And it's, it's good to see you over there, like I said. I do want to say thank you so much to Scott and DPW and our city manager, John Hanepin, because just like Steve said, we wouldn't be able to do these projects if our staff wasn't diligent and went through the due process of making sure that we are spending our tax dollars wisely, but also looking for those grant opportunities where we can offset the tax dollars that we spend and, and take advantage of grants that we qualify for. And also having familiarity with the different engineering firms that can come in and bid these, and being comfortable with those bids and moving forward to work on those projects. And I certainly hope this is a precursor to our next scheduled projects next year with William Street, Lloyd Street. I hope that, and I will keep my fingers crossed, that we have successful, you know, bidding opportunities for those projects as well. I hope that Putnam Street kind of sets that bar for those projects moving forward for our community, because I think our community can learn from what Putnam Street has gone through with those residents and, and just the even keel that we've seen over there over the past couple of months. So I appreciate that. I also want to say thank you to Kent Hall for, you know, your diligence in moving your project forward with this community park for our community. We have a lot of parks, but I think this is going to be very special, you know, as it continues to move through the process and we start seeing things actually physically happen over there. I know things have happened over there in the past, small little things. But I'm really excited to see how this grows over the next couple of years. And when we can do a ribbon cutting, I, I hope that we're all still sitting here around the table so we can be there for that moment, because I know it's a passion of yours. We are in the midst of fall. It is getting darker earlier. Scott, I want to ask real quick, when do we anticipate our first leaf pickup out there in the community? Because I'm sure residents are probably wondering, because fall has come quickly.
Fall's coming, yes. Leaf pickup starts on the 16th, which is next Monday.
Fantastic. That's great to know. Will we still be doing branch pickup that, during that time period? Or are we shifting gears?
There is a branch pickup. I think it goes into November.
Okay, great. So leaf pickup starting on the 16th, there's still some branch pickup through November. If you have questions regarding the services that our city provides, please don't hesitate to check our website or contact our city offices, and you can get that information. Again, we've got some great, exciting events that are going to be happening here in town with the Chamber of Commerce, specifically with October 28th, that Saturday, four which is in warlocks downtown. It'll be a great opportunity for families and kids. And then we will start rolling into winter and get excited for our light parade the first weekend of December. So with that, I just want to say thank you all so much for this evening. And I will go ahead and call to adjourn at 7:55.